You guys ready? Meeting come to order, we have to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everybody to the Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners Caucus meeting, May 5th, 2022. George, can you do roll call?
Sure thing. Commissioner Barco.
Here.
Commissioner Grotioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
Lisa Catania.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, present.
Before we get on to the meeting tonight, we have three motions that need to be considered before we move forward and then swearing in to the officers afterwards, and then we'll open it up to the citizens' comments after we do this. Nicole? Joe, are you gonna do this, or you want Nicole?
Nicole can do it, because I don't have the paperwork in front of me.
Okay.
I'm in the ER.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Have the board consider a motion appointing Adam Biondi to the position of part-time officer in the Upper Chichester Township Police Department effective May 6, 2022.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. So ordered.
Consider a motion appointing Eric Collenbach to the position of part-time officer in the Upper Chichester Township Police Department effective May 6, 2022.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion appointing Alan Zaccardi to the position of part-time officer in the Upper Chichester Township Police Department effective May 6, 2022.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Now, at this time, we'll have the Honorable Judge Dave Griffin swear to new officers in in any order they would like to go. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Adam Biondi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend.
I'll support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
I will discharge my duties.
I will discharge my duties.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For Upper Chichester Township.
For Upper Chichester Township.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And integrity.
And integrity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Read your hand on the Bible. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Alan Zaccardi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
I will discharge my duties.
I will discharge my duties.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And integrity.
And integrity.
Police officer of Upper Chichester Township.
For a police officer of the Upper Chichester Township.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Eric Collenbach.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
I will discharge my duties.
I will discharge my duties.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For Upper Chichester Township.
For Upper Chichester Township.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And integrity.
And integrity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Hey, Officer Rhodes. Oh, my goodness. George, which one is that? Ringo? Elu. Yeah, I always forget. Yeah, right? Probably eating too much. He needs to go on a walk. Oh.
Okay. Now that we're done with the swearing of the new officers, congratulations to them. We'll open it up to the citizens' comments, to residents who are not able to attend the meeting. In person may comment during this time by dialing 571-748-4021. And that's 571-748-4021. And entering 181-187-931-POUND. If you want to mute your phone, dial *6. After you unmute your phone, state your name and address, and if we get your comments, you have been given two minutes to speak. We'll leave the phone lines open for a few minutes. Take note, there was no phone calls calling in for a citizen comment. We're opening up to citizen comment on the floor. As any citizens' comment, come up to the podium and state your name and address and telephone number if you want us to get back to you. Nope.
Hi, on behalf of the friends of the Upper Chichester Library, I just wanted to thank the commissioners for their support through this long journey in receiving the R cap and ask for your support as we bring this project home.
Thank you. Could we have your name to give to the reporter? Sorry about that.
Susan Malvihill. M U L V I H I L L.
Thank you. There is no other citizen's comment? Keith, you have anything?
We received bids for the road program, so I have that. That'll happen next week. The base bid total was $607,509.40, which is actually only over $8,000 from what we estimated, so I was happy with that. The alternate for Bellevue Terrace and the ADA Ramp at Mill and Chi, which is just the one corner of Mill and Chichester Avenue, the other three are completed, brings the total up to $643,926.35. The low bid was that of AF Damon. I don't know whether, I don't see that it got into the packet, so I'll make sure that everyone has a copy of the bid tab as well as your individual streets based on the construction or the bid costs. The Somerset Drainage, the solicitor has advised that he's waiting for the attorney for Somerset and will have those agreements between the HOA and the township, and at that point, we'll be able to sign the contracts for the contractor that's going to do that drainage work. So at this point, we're waiting on them to complete. I-95 Industrial Park Extension Support Letter. That Support Letter, we had a meeting with PennDOT last week to discuss the various alternatives. PennDOT is looking at feasibility of finding alternative routes or a new route or improvements to existing routes to get the tractor-trailer traffic from the I-95 Business Park and the, what used to be the Sun Business Park on Concord Road. They have completed their study. They do have an alternative that is completed. I think a board may remember that at one point, they were talking about extending Bridgewater Road out to 452. That is not the selected alternative. So that's actually good news for the township, because we're not looking at additional traffic on an already over-capacity roadway on 452. But as part of this and their feasibility study, they determined that there are certain improvements that should be done. And one of those improvements is the intersection of I-95 ingress and egress and the Chestnut Street, 452 intersection. So they're looking at actually signaling the unsignaled intersection and upgrading the signaled intersection at Chestnut Street. With that, they'll also be doing lane changes for safety. So it's almost turning out that this would be a highway safety project. They have priorities. That project happens to be number four priority on the list. So Commissioner Rakowski was on the meeting call with me, as well as George Needles, and we thought it was best, in order to push that project along, that we do a letter of support for that particular project. Now, we're gonna ask for that letter next, or for us to put together that letter and send it next week. The Chichester Avenue Streetscape Project that has gone to PennDOT, so we have about 30 days before we hear whether we have a permit or changes that need to be made. We are moving forward with that. That will take us up to Beeson and a little bit beyond that. Stormwater projects, Commissioner Neary and I are gonna be doing door-to-door to try to get the easements for Peach, Plum, and Cherry Street project. And hopefully, once we have those, the design's already completed, and we'll be able to move forward with bidding that project to get that stormwater problem completed. You do have a copy of my report. I can report general progress at this point. AutoZone is moving forward with their punch list. They have a few things. I met with them last week. We met with PennDOT concerning the AutoZone punch list. I'm still waiting for resolution for the Wawa punch list. I have received the ASBIL. My report actually says that we haven't received the ASBIL for the Willowbrook Clubhouse. We have received that. Actually, we received it yesterday. Going to review that. So hopefully, next week, I will have an escrow release, the final escrow release for that project, if all is well with the ASBIL. I have nothing else unless anyone has any questions.
Just make it aware, Mary, that was the engineer's report. I mean, I said something to the chief. I didn't even say nothing. But that's fine.
I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to put on a record, yeah, engineer, the professionals.
I'm sorry.
What's that? Now, I was talking to the chief, and she thought I said the engineer's report. I didn't get the chance to.
I just started.
Put that on the record, that the professionals report.
I'm moving for that 19%.
But I just wanna make a quick comment on a couple, real quick, before anybody has anything. Lisa's correct. I would recommend us to send this letter to PennDOT. They're phased for that I-95 Industrial Park and everything. It hasn't even got to the design phase, I don't think, yet. This was recommendations we didn't know, we were unaware of, and they're recommending us, hey, we might be able to get that done. So that's something in improvement, if we could get something done. It went from 28 million to 38 million, and as usual, I think they're leaning to the 28 million. But that seems kinda low to what they, with all the work that they're talking about before they even get the road built over I-95. So if we could get what we can on Chestnut and I-95 and 452, that would be great. We could get some support letters from other people to try to push it. I think George, that guy Ryan that we were talking to, he said he could help us on anything else. Just send it to him, say, hey, we could use your support for this project to move it along. I mean, there was some mention about bringing another road out on the 452 up there by Applebee's and stuff like that, but there was no study from that point to I-95 about, are you doing anything? Are you gonna widen the road? You gonna make anything safer? And they had nothing for us, and I don't, I'm not speaking for them, but I don't think Essendon would want everything coming through, especially with the other industrial park that's already been built. Now, they did do their study for that industrial park, but they're talking a completely new road from I-95 to get to the other side. And that'd be a lot of traffic coming on the 452. The other thing is the stormwater projects. Do we have a list for the whole township yet? I mean, of areas that we, have the commissioners in each ward reached out to PUT or put something together?
So last month, the last month's Public Works meeting, PUT had done a priority list for projects that he felt that the maintenance crews could do. I did a punchlet, or excuse me, a priority list. It's in one document. I thought Jane Marie was putting it together, and you probably should have that shortly.
Now, just, this way each commissioner could take a look at it, it might be, because trust me, we're getting two inches of rain this weekend or whatever it's gonna be, and something else might pop up.
Quite frankly, this priority list is what we feel is the best bang for the buck and things that need to be completed because of complaints that we've gotten, PUT's experience with those particular areas, and what I've done for quite a some time as well. So hopefully, the board will take a look at that, and it's really your call as to which ones really get done.
Can we reach out to PennDOT across the street from Wendy's? They have two storm drains, and nothing reaches them, and one, it's like a pond, and there's two storm drains right there back, right up against each other, and they don't seem like they're working. I don't know if theirs or ours to fix or clean out or what, but it never drains there. And Mike has another spot in front of Wells Fargo. That storm drain is clogged to the gills, too. I'm done. Anybody else have anything for the engineer?
I do not.
Okay, we'll move along to the solicitor's report. Michael Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. You have a copy of my written report, excuse me, in the file. There will be four action items specifically for next week, and those all involve land development extensions. One for 3033 Market Street, one for 4800 Chichester Avenue Land Development, one for 900 Township Line, and one for 801 Bethel Road. Those will all be available to you for extensions, approvals. There is a construction committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May the 10th, to discuss 4800 Chichester Avenue Development Project. We finalized and gotten signatures for the historic school property lease that's signed by the school district as well as the township, and that has been all wrapped up. In addition, I prepared contracts for bright new landscaping, the remediation work to be completed at Creekside Village. We received the signed contracts and insurance certificates that were needed. As it relates to the county health department, as you may have seen in the paper, preliminary injunction was granted for the townships, which Upper Chichester was a participant in, indicating that the county was not to do any of the health inspections for the various restaurants and businesses within Upper Chichester, that we are continuing to do those inspections until further order of the court. That is only a preliminary injunction order. It is not a final order, but at least we have some clarity from the time being going forward. You had asked me, and last month we had approved, talking about making changes in a resolution related to remote participation, not only by the public, but by members of the Board of Commissioners in the event of an emergency. I have become aware that there is a law that was just recently signed by the governor, and I believe it becomes effective on June the 18th. I'm gonna take a look at that. That may change some of the things that we were originally going to do. But, so I did not put together the draft of that resolution until I have an opportunity to go through that and make sure that we're all on the same page. Other than that, everything else appears to be in order.
Thank you. Did it look, I mean, just looking at it, or any listener, is it in favor of them?
I read the summary, and it looks like it sets guidelines for remote participation, so yes, I would say. I don't wanna go through.
Right, understandable, right.
So I think they actually cover it, so yes.
Okay, that's good news. Anything to be brought to the attention of the solicitor?
A question is a follow-up from last month regarding tractor-trailers on 452. At the old Meeting House tavern, have we, have you been able to forge, to get together a letter or anything?
All from a lawyer who represents the mortgage interest of the property. I did communicate with him that we're having issues with that, and I asked him to relay information back to the owner of the property and also get us contact information for the property owner. Also let him know that if it continues to happen, we currently have a gate around a portion of the property for the building, but I said I wouldn't put it past us exploring to gating the entire property and billing him for the charge for that. So I tried to go that route first to see if we can get anything out of it, but I have noticed that they're still over there.
So what was the response? What are the?
He stated he was going to get in touch with the property owner, or I guess you call him property owner at this point. Who knows? I mean, he's pretty much given up his rights to the property. He would get in touch with him and then get back to us with the resolution. That was last Thursday that I spoke with him, and I have not heard from him since at this point, so I'll follow back up.
Was that on the sheriff's sale, or the?
So that was my next question. Isn't that?
So it was listed on the judicial sale, and I've been calling back and forth with the county, because it was supposed to be pulled. So I'm waiting to see what the result of that was, because we had a confirmation that it was not going to be sold at the judicial sale at this point.
Any reason why, I mean, the county pulled it off the sale, or we requested it?
As you know, we've been working with the county as part of this Act 135 and things. So they had indicated that this, they would, that this could potentially be a property due to the circumstances around the property that they could hold for one judicial sale.
Okay, so that was a week ago, and do you follow up? I know you were planning to go away, so if you could follow up before you please.
Anything to be brought to the attention of the solicitor? Okay, we'll go to the manager's report. George?
Evening, everybody. The first item is, we have a couple escrow releases that have been trickling in over the past couple days. So I'll have a couple resolutions to release some funds for various grading projects. Clover has submitted for their second escrow release, which has been approved by the previous alternate engineer. So I'll have that in front of you. There still is a significant amount of retainage on that, as that project is not finished. The owner, I'm not sure if you remember, the owner of 2366 Thomas Avenue, Jamir Montgomery, came in front of us a couple months ago in relation to some stormwater testing for his property. Since then, he has sent numerous emails to the township, most recent requesting a refund of his permit.
emails to the township, most recent requesting a refund of his permit, saying that he's walking away from the job and won't be building the house on the property. He'd also like a refund of his remaining escrow. So I'm working on putting together a kind of a cost analysis, what we've spent on this and what he's paid, and that I'll get in front of you for that. Chichester School District is having a food truck event, and they're seeking a fee waiver from the inspection fees for the food trucks. This is something that we've done for them in the past. We have a individual who has accepted the conditional offer for the position of Director and License and Inspections. I'm working on the contract for that, and hope to have all of that in front of you by next week for approval. We've hired an Administrative Assistant Communications Coordinator. Since Andrew Henderson will be leaving us, he has accepted a position of Director of Communications for Senator John Keane's office. The individual who's working with us now, Jasmine Campbell, has been training this week, and so I'll be asking the board to ratify that at the upcoming meeting. Last month, we, we approved the, the board approved the hiring of Marco Benelli, promotion to the position of Director of Finance, and appointed him as the Treasurer. That being said, he'll need to become a signer on the bank accounts. So we'll have to do a resolution for check signers. I have some of the documents I need signed tonight for that. We received communication from Al Thomaselli with Benish in reference to the Section 103 U.S. 322 project, buttoning up a couple little things, but something for the board. I don't believe that this needs to be something that's an actual vote, but we do need to get back to them with some information on it. Pico is requesting access to our gate at Jefferson Story Road. So basically, what that would mean is the gate that is installed by PennDOT, they would also issue a key to that lock to Pico, to be able to have access to the area back there.
Isn't there a gate there already?
There is, there is currently a gate there, and they do not have access to our gate currently. So they're requesting as, so one of the things through this, when they do these PennDOT projects, they, you know, they go through this utility coordination, and this was what came up out of the utility coordination, they'd like to have access back there.
Are they replacing the gate themselves, or?
Yeah, the project, when they do the project, there'll be a new gate installed.
So we could get that back before they destroy it, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll pull them out.
And they will just have a key for, they'll have a key, we'll have a key for it?
Yep. So as long as anybody is not adamantly opposed to Pico having a key to be able to access back there, we can go ahead and let them know. At this time, that's the only utility who has requested a key for that. If anything else comes in through that utility coordination, I'll let you know. And then also, we have a proposal that is, is going to be modified slightly. So I'll have another one to you this week from Schemes Marketing. This is to, to work as a consultant for the township, providing marketing material services, you know, creating some of those videos that we do with like the, the Junior Rec Board, the Historical Society, pretty much all the organizations that we use to promote the Boothwind Town Center, to promote the different activities going on in the township. The, and then under other, I have this item that recently actually came in today. So the owner of Tacos Mexico Incorporated, operating at 2805 Chichester Avenue, if you remember previously, we've kind of waived the fee and allowed them to operate the food truck in the parking lot of the property while they get the, while they get the building ready. They're requesting an extension of 20 to 30 days so that they can work on making sure that they get all their permits in line and getting everything coordinated. They had some issues with getting an architect, and then they had some issues with getting the, on the schedule for the company that's doing their ancil system. So that'll be in front of you. They do realize that there's been some issues with, with parking and things in the area, and with some of the customers that have been coming in there. So they're, they're going to change the, the setup of where they have the, the truck located. They're going to pull it forward, make it closer to Chichester Avenue to free up some of the parking spots on the side of the building. Right now, they pretty much don't have utilization of any of those parking spots due to the location of the food truck. But, and just one other thing, I will not be at the meeting next week. Ray Fuller, Director of Police and Emergency Services Administration, will be filling in that day, and he'll be prepped for the meeting.
George, one question. Did Mr. Benish say they're still going to start on time next year?
Yeah, so this, this, he indicated that they're still on target. So this is, I mean, we're, he's buttoning up any last little things. We had had a meeting with them back in February. So I, we, we still have some concerns about the off-ramp at Dutton and the design of that. But the reality is, as we look through that, there's not really much they can do with the space that's there. So we couldn't really come up with an alternate that we could propose to them that wouldn't totally set this project back. So we are going to look at that intersection and see if there's something that can be done after the fact. But as we pressed Al, he went through the full process of all of the different options that they evaluated there, and this really seemed to be the best option that they were able to come up with.
Anything, anything we brought to the attention in manager?
I just have a couple items. Just like to welcome Jasmine to her new position. Wish her the best as she takes on her, her new journey with Upper Chichester Township. So welcome aboard Jasmine. Also to Andrew, I will miss you. You've been a great asset for us. I wish you the very best of luck in, at your new position, and don't lose contact with us. Also, I know we talked about sending out a letter regarding pot, regarding parking concerns. I think that was at Peach Street. I was wondering if I can get an update, if the letter is ready to go?
The letter will be ready next week.
Okay, thank you.
If you could come in, maybe Wednesday, we get that signed.
All right, thanks. That's all that I have.
Anything else to be brought to the attention in the manager? George, they had the extension for the taco place. Are they doing any work prior to trying, that doesn't need the effect of the, an architect design for redesigning his kitchen or whatever he's doing?
Major components that he, that he wants to do is what's kind of holding up, which is changing the position, I believe, of the ancil system. And the, yeah, I don't know if you remember the previous restaurant, but there was kind of like a path that you can kind of just kind of get back if you wanted to from the front. He wants to block that off and, and make another walkway there. So everything pretty much has to be on that drawing at this point that he wants to do.
So the extension would be 20 to 30 days, but that's just for him to get his plans in and not start to work and try to?
Well, right now, he has till May 30th. So he's trying to get the, so he believes, he thinks he can get the plans and everything flushed out by the end of May.
And start to work.
Yeah, so he's asking for those additional 20, 30 days to get the work done in that time period. Based off of, you know, what we've been speaking to with commercial work, this is probably still an aggressive timeline, but.
Now, this, just one question I have for next week. The schemes marketing, is that for just recreational? Is that the whole township? Is it, is it, is that going to be part of the recreational budget because it's 2,500 per month, monthly, or is that coming out of general fund for everybody in whole?
Yeah, ideally, we would put that contract under professional services in the, in the, the exec, the 401 Executive Department. It would serve everybody. So it would be creating content still for, for all of the different departments. So, you know, previously, we've done things like commercials when we needed to hire for, for Public Works, or, you know, like something to communicate, hey, what, this is what's going on with recycling. External sources, Historical Society, you know, internal, the recreation, or something with a license inspection. So it's going to be everywhere.
And then one last quick, a quick question was the food trucks. Michelle will be inspecting them, at least. We had to have them inspected.
Yeah, so it's, it's, the request is to waive the fee. This permit will go out as approved and conditional to, you know, them getting the inspections, and then the board can waive those fees if they so choose.
Looks like five trucks.
Is the health inspector on board waiving the fee?
We, we do get charged a nominal fee from the, the health inspector when the board waives the fee, but.
Think the last time she just charged like a flat fee to do all five.
Okay.
If not, we'll move on to our commissioners. Move on to Madam Vice President, Nicole Whitaker.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I can hardly contain myself.
Is that happy?
Yes, I'm happy. Mike, do you know why I'm happy? Yes, I am happy because the library received the $2 million grant. Thank you, thank you. We have been working for several years to, to accomplish that. So it's huge. We're, we're not there yet. We still need to raise another $1 million within six months. So we have a lot of work to do, but we are, I guess, essentially halfway there. So just want to say kudos to the library board, all of our volunteers and the supporters, you know, in, in Upper Chi as well as Delaware County that have supported the fundraising events of the library over the past 20 years. So with that, the Recreation Department is preparing for summer camp. The library also is preparing for their summer camp as well, and we will be collaborating again. We're also doing something new this year. We're going to have a Juneteenth celebration, and that will be in the Twin Oaks neighborhood on Friday, June, was that the 18th, 17th? Thank you. So it'll be our first time doing it, so we'll see how that goes. And then if we need to move it or expand it, we will. That was a thought by our, our manager, George, so thank you for that. What else? I think that's, that's pretty much it. I'll report on some, some other items next week. I also want to tell Andrew that I'm going to miss him so much, and you've done a lot for the town. I'm glad. I hope too, that, that you will continue to work with us and work with us in terms of communicating and, you know, keeping up with our website and things of that nature. I did share with the library that you would be leaving, but that you would still be in Delco. So you'll be working with Senator Keane's office. Oh, yeah, I wanted to mention that. So Senator Keane and State Representative Craig Williams were both very instrumental in getting the library this funding. They both worked together to, to make sure that it, it came through fruition for us. So I do want to thank them for their hard work in getting, in getting us the money. So Andrew is going to work with, with Senator Keane, so good luck, Andrew. We will miss you, and welcome to Jasmine. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention, Commissioner Whitaker? Congratulations on your grant. Can we borrow some? No. Mr. Commissioner Neri, are you with us?
Commissioner Neri's battery has died on his phone, so he asked me to give his report.
Okay.
So the administration and finance reports will be available next week in your packets and on file. The police report is in the, the binders tonight. And congratulations to the new three part-time officers. And Commissioner Neri also stated that he will miss Andrew, and thank you for your service to the community. And he also would like to welcome Jasmine to the team. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along to Commissioner Michael Guardios.
Thank, thank you. Tonight, as, as our township manager briefly mentioned in his report, we hired a Director of License and, and Inspections, and he will be starting over the next couple weeks. So I'm looking forward to that. Also, as our solicitor mentioned in his report, we had several extensions for land development. So we'll be voting on that next week, I believe. And then I really don't have anything else to report on except for the letter for Peach Street. You know, there's some, there, there has been parking, there have been parking concerns back in that area. I am not going to forget about the adjacent streets also. I'm, I'm going to look into parking concerns within the whole neighborhood. I really don't have anything else to report on. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have anything for Commissioner Guardios? So now, we're going to third word, Commissioner Biaco.
Thank you. Once again, welcome Jasmine and Andrew. We're going to miss you. Man, I would have took it easy on you in Baggo if I'd have known it upset you. Highway Sanitation, Putt and Jane Marie have found a couple possible candidates that I'm going to ask the board to vote on next week for two part-time positions. One could possibly turn into a full-time because he already carries a CDL license, so we'll see how that works out. The new trash routes were very, very close. Speaking with George before the meeting, he thinks we're shooting somewhere end of the summer, you know, to implement things. And we talked about before about how we'll do everything we can to notify the residents. And I'm sure we're going to get some complaints, but I think it's going to work out better in the long run. We're going to be more efficient and get more done. The sewer authority, all the reports are on file. I have my copy in an email. I'll forward to the rest of the board so yous can read it. Not much going on there. I mean, they reorganized. I think it pretty much stayed the same. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Biaco? If not, we'll move to mine. First word, the medic report is in your file tonight. Also, emergency management, I forward that to everybody. Was that put in a packet tonight, George? Okay. Because I did forward that. We'll get to fire department report and the fire marshal for next week. And on the other part of my section, it says, the other would be requesting to send a letter to the county to terminate the agreement we have with the power box out front. As it states, either party could terminate the lease after 30 days written notice. And next week will be, I bring it up. The board wants to do it, they do it. If they don't, it doesn't get done. This is a five-year contract, I noticed. But as I stated, we're just going to send a letter to them and time to remove it. So be up to the board what they want to do with it. Other than that, I do have a concern. Mr. Pierce, I don't know how to go about this way, and even with George, I am concerned 200% with this medic unit and the Crozier Hospital. Everything I'm reading in the newspapers, nobody is giving any kind of an answer to the medic service in Delaware County. Can we sit down with them? I, I've never, I mean, just really reach out and make sure that you could reach out to their people, their solicitor, their head guy, somebody, and say, what is your plan? That's, that's what I'm.
Here's my question. We have our own medic unit, okay? Not everybody else does. How much can ours be abused by everybody else?
Too much.
Right, I'm, right, I mean.
Right, right. I mean, well, are they willing, or when are they going to be willing to be able to say, hey? The county won't, which is. Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't. Well, I don't, I don't.
The county declared an emergency when this happened, right? So their intention is to, you know, when they're open to have conversations is to, to meet with them. And I know that they've been working on, cause it's the medics, it's fire, it's the entire EMTs that are, you know, one of the firehouses that are, some are independent like us, most of them are not. So there's a lot, a lot at stake and, um, you know, it's very, still very early and they haven't had any, any discussion.
More than any responses to thanks the work we got from the director of the.
My question to the, the new health department would be, if they pull everything out like they say they wanna do, what's the county gonna do? I mean, you can't wait until.
They're, they're believing. They, all I can tell you is they are acutely aware of it.
Right. Uh, we, we were in the same position eight years ago and that's when, and what, what we're seeing in the newspaper now, cause trust me, I keep every article is three-hundred and forty or three-hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And back then, when we were in the same position eight years ago, the number was two-hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I, I, I still have all that paperwork and it, because, don't get me wrong, I understand what they're saying, uh, but there's a lot of what ifs, but.
The issue, the issue is they can, the company that's running this, I understand. Can't make money unless they have. So the ones that are getting the bills, not being able to serve the hospital is not, is a bill that was handled. So it's, it's a very fluid situation at this point. I'll try, Commissioner, though.
Yeah, I, I just.
I'm not gonna get any answers.
Tell them, tell them our doors are open. I mean, it's something, because like Joe was saying.
Well, we have been doing a lot of that. So, I mean, we're actually one of the few that are in good state.
Yes and no. Yes, because we have a. Yes, be, yeah, but Mr. Pierce, yes, because we have our medic unit, but no, because once they remove the other ones with the license of a medic unit, they had their mutual aid. So that pulls this medic unit out of Upper Chi way too many times. Where, where do I do as president of the board saying, no, you're not going? And then the EHS council is gonna be yelling and screaming at me.
You're not, you're not going to do that. We have the other.
That's.
Believe me, there are, the mere fact that you have the medic units and you have the items, there are places that are way worse positioned than you are that they're a lot more concerned about having zero service. So, I, I mean, I, I don't mean to be crass or smart in this.
No, I, you're not, I'm just.
Just telling you about that spot.
And, and I. And, and being in the service for the years I've been, I see the writing on the wall and, and we are gonna be abused. And I'm not, and I'm not saying, I'm, it's, it's not fair to us. And I'm not saying, I hope they could get some kind of a deal, cause they all had the letter. The letter's already been gone, passed a ten-day notice or whatever. So now they have ninety days, they pull out. So we have ninety days to say, hey, who's moving where or what?
Commissioner, you come up with a solution, I'll be glad if you can.
Well, they got, they gotta be, and it's not just the hospitals. It's got, it's, it's time where somebody may have to think about regionalization.
So that's.
As I understand it, they're talking about all.
Right.
So it's not like they're sitting there on their hands.
Right, I didn't say they weren't, but not knowing and trying to.
Your priority, not that you have the influences and the medics, you're not gonna get a whole lot of sympathy from, from the higher ups to get the deal done because you're worried about.
I, I don't. Right, well. Yeah, but that, that doesn't mean that we had, I'm not, I'm, what I'm saying is we could pull ours and say, we have nothing now. Yeah. Yeah.
I don't wanna deny anybody a service, but I want our people to be taken care of.
Absolutely, yes. It's all part of the process. I, I, I could give you an answer, a legal answer if I could happen to, but I, I, it could tell you, there's a deal, it could tell you.
Well, I'll, I'll just give, right, I'll just give these guys a little education. If, if Christiana does it, Christiana is not in the business of paramedic unit. The state of Delaware, there are counties which our county may have to step up and do, and I don't care if it's on record or not, they run the medic unit out of the county. So does Cecil County, Maryland. So they've been running it for years. We're a different animal, I know it. It, they got, we got more fire companies than Delaware County and the whole state of Delaware. Now look what's going on. We're all consolidating because we don't have the membership. Uh, they do more paid people down there. I've been telling us up here, we're gonna be paid someday too. You may not be. I mean, to a point, Conkerville has it down to the T. They're not going anywhere. They're not going, they're not expanding. They, they already said, no, we're not moving. But I'm, what I'm trying to say is, I would hope the county listens and say, hey, they may have to step up for the regionalization and/or a county service medic unit. I don't know.
As I understand it, all those options are being discussed.
Right. All right, I've said enough. I'm just worried for our people here in Upper Chichester and what it's gonna cost us in the long run, so. I'm sure.
Um, what's the, um, why are you making the motion? Why do you want to add the motion to have the ballot box removed?
It's time. It's a mail-in box, mail-in ballot, you can mail it in.
The ballots you can mail in?
Mm-hmm.
So are they not, as the county stated that they were not, that they're going to be eliminating the boxes? Or, I mean, you could always mail it in.
Right. And you could always bring your ballot up to the, your ward for election day.
Can't do that anymore. That was only during COVID, where you could actually bring it up and drop it in. So the ballot boxes are for people that get their ballots mailed to them and they wanna drop them off before election day. You can't take them to the polls anymore. That was only during COVID. So you mail them in.
They did it last election. They came to my wards, they came to my ward and dropped them off.
Count, right, you can take them to the county, you put them in that box, that box closes the night of election at lock at eight, or your eight P.M. But as far as bringing them to the polls on the day of election, oh, I thought that was just on election day during COVID. That's not, that, that's not what you can do now. So I'm just asking for a, a reason. Do you have a reason, a legitimate reason why you want to have that box removed from our front?
I think everything's open. If, if you need a ballot, you could mail it in or you could get an absentee ballot, the absentee ballots. It's, I, it's my right to say, hey, the, first of all, when I voted for this, I was a tiebreaker voter. And the reason I did it was because of COVID. And it was bad and, and nobody knew how long it was. Nobody, everybody's out and about doing everything and I just feel it's time to remove it. At that time, I also thought it was only for one year until we saw it. And they said, no, it could be, it's a five-year contract and it could be removed by any written notice and that's what I'm asking for, is to remove it.
So basically you're stating that.
I'm not stating nothing.
So you're, you're stating that you would like it removed because we're pretty much out of COVID and people can mail them or they can take them to media themselves.
Or request an absentee ballot, as they've been doing for a hundred years. Now, there's two different ballots, two diff, that, it's still an absentee ballot and it's.
It's no more, it's only one ballot.
That's not, when I went, when I went out to the county the other month, the, the lady explained to me and I had the paperwork at home, there's an absentee ballot, the same way that has to be turned in before, that's goes to the polls and you still have the mail-in ballot to go to a box or take to the county.
Same thing.
Well, the application, it, yeah, if the application's saying, she told me it's absentee and no, they got two different forms, two different types, is what they told me out in the county.
Yeah, I know.
What, what? I don't have the right to say it's time to remove it? I'm just, I know.
You can do, you.
That's all I'm asking.
Yes, and I'm just getting clarity on why you're asking it. And, and then you're making up other comments and I'm just telling you that it's one ballot. Now, it used to be an absentee and then.
I will show you the paperwork they gave me from.
Change, all of that is the same thing. You used to have to have an excuse, right? Now you don't, so it's one form.
For the absentee, you still have to have an excuse, as you do. That's her exact words at the county. When I went out there and she gave me both forms and she says that the.
Yeah, well, show me, please.
The, the absentee, you still have to have that excuse why you're not gonna be there, whether you're on vacation, in hospital, whatever.
My, my biggest problem with the box is the way it's policed. People could walk up to that box and put ten ballots in there, no matter what party they're from, what, you know what I mean? It's nothing to do with party with, with me.
Yeah, they ask the rule we can.
And, and I questioned the constable one election on that and he told me, if you could show me the ten ballots that that person put in, then I can remove them. I said, what do you mean? He said, well, they're all the same and you don't know what ten that person put in. Do they fall in the box and he can't just, you know, distinguish which ones the guy put in? That's my problem with it.
Yeah, you can put, you can actually put a number of them in there. So what are you saying? That.
Uh, it can't be policed, it's gotta be policed better. It's, anybody could walk up to that box anytime during the day and just put something in it. They can come back four or five times, they could put ten in at once.
So you're saying that, um, for example, yourself, you could get multiple ballots mailed to your, to your house? So, so the county's gonna mail you multiple ballots?
Uh, you could get other people's ballots, you can.
Right, like I dropped my mom's ballot off. So I dropped off two ballots. I dropped off mine and my mom's.
You're not supposed to be dropping off. You're always be dropping your ballot.
So, so wait a minute. There was a form that we filled out so that I could drop off her ballot. There is a form, okay? So I did, so she filled that form out. But my point being is that if you do it the right way.
The right way?
Yeah.
And I, I don't think it's being policed that, to make sure it's being done the right way. I, I get it, some people can't get there, you know, should be absentee ballots, but that system is my issue.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jim, but my understanding is one person per, per ballot. We've called people up here to drop the ballots off, uh, that can be counted. Our task employees have, you know, have, you know.
Say there's nothing they could do.
Step in saying, no, you can, you can't draw a call for the others' ballot, they have people's ballot. It's just, it's, it's the whole police system also. And it, to me, it's, 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 it's either side.
Oh yeah, it's not, definitely not.
No, but it's, I'm sure it is, you know what I mean?
All right, anything? Whoop, George?
My words, Commissioner Neary asked me to read this real quick. Uh, at nine percent on low battery won't last very long. I am opposed to removing the ballot box as it disproportionately affects older voters. Don't worry.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some feedback on what the reason was and everybody has their own opinion, so, and I respect that.
Okay. Need a message to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor? All right, pause. Good night.